I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shaun, would you call the roll please?
Yes, Brian Wallace.
Here.
Tracy Bowen. Jeff Cottington.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Mike Liddon.
Here.
Alan Jacobson.
Here.
Mike Kelly. Mitch Myerson.
Here.
Gia. Mike McGinnis.
Here.
Pat DeGangi. Rich O'Brien.
Here.
All right, this meeting is being recorded. We are meeting via go-to-meeting virtually. Does anybody have any changes, addition, or deletions to the agenda?
I do not, Mr. President, but I would state for the record at the outset that the Borough Council did meet in the executive session on August 26th, which was the last public meeting. And this meeting, that meeting in executive session was to discuss the Borough Manager position, which is a permitted basis to an executive session, and there was no action taken following.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Is there any public comment?
No.
Okay, no public. No public comment. Would anybody care to make a motion for the consent agenda to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the August 10th, 2020 council meeting with dispersants from the general fund of $162,718.57 for the month of August, with the financial report to be filed for audit?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, discussion? In that case, a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? That motion carries. We have no special items. We will move to the Mayor's Report. Mayor Wallace.
The muted. The muted. There you go, sorry about that. Nothing particularly important. I did have some complaints about a fairly obnoxious light at the pop-in, and I passed them on to the zoning officer. But that's all I have for the Mayor's Report.
Okay, Central Bucks Regional Police Commissioner report, Mayor Wallace.
Yes, we had a couple of things going on today. We actually had the groundbreaking ceremony for the new police station. So that was very exciting, and we had all sorts of dignitaries there, watching, putting in their silver shovels into the ground and applauding each other on what a great job we've done. It really is, it really is a big deal because to pull that off with the three boroughs and the commission, as well as, you know, money from the state, working with Doylestown Borough on a site that they've been trying to grab for 10 years or more, it really was a great feat when you, when you think about all the pieces that had to come together. Compared to the building that's going to go on now, this will seem like nothing compared to what it took to get to this spot. So it's a big deal for, for Central Bucks, it's a big deal for Shalfon as well.
Mayor Wallace.
Go ahead.
One request. Knock on wood with that last statement, please.
Yes. Well, interestingly enough, they seem to think that they'll be done by July, the contractor, so next, next summer we can potentially be in there.
Oh my goodness.
The generals seem to think that September was probably more accurate, but if you think about what's going on over there, 12 months is, is pretty amazing. I think that the big setback, if there's going to be any, is going to be materials, the pipeline for materials and contractors, although I think it's probably in much better shape than it was a couple of months ago, still is, is a little touchy for, for, you know, from wood to furniture. So we'll see how that goes. But that's pretty optimistic, and it seems to be, you know, barring any bad weather or something like that, that would hold off for a month, it seems to be a real estate expectation.
That's phenomenal. That is, that is truly phenomenal.
Um, also. Yeah, also, we, we have come to a tentative agreement with the police union on their new contract as well. That, the, the details of that aren't, aren't made to be, aren't able to be made public yet until we have a signed deal, but we have moved on and, and we seem to have gotten agreement on, on everything there. So I think both parties walked away with, with, with a half-smile and a half-frown, so that is probably a good thing. Yeah, and lastly, the Finance Committee submitted their budget for next year. They're bound by law to submit that budget first to the municipalities for their approval. And of course, that budget is an inaccurate budget because, for one thing, it didn't have the police contract numbers in it. It's sort of kind of a shooting budget to give us a general idea. At this time, we, we take no action on that until it is, is formalized and finalized as well. In your packet are the incident reports, if you want to take a closer look, and anything that's going on there. And I think that's all we have, unless Captain Milligan, if you want to add anything to the police report.
No, I have nothing further. If I could, take a second. I'd like to say thanks, Shaun, and the guys at Public Works. The last couple storms we had blow through, they did a quick job on getting out there, getting us generators, getting us the support we need, and, you know, helping maintain public safety. So it was real good teamwork out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have for now.
Very good. Public Works Committee, Mrs. Jacobson.
Yes, the report is in the packet. I just kind of want to highlight that if you look at the report, we accomplished a lot this, in spite of COVID, our projects, our street project, park projects have been completed. Additionally, we received $300,000 towards stormwater replacement from the H2O grant. We, we were one of two municipalities in Bucks County that received one. Doylestown Township also got one. The good news is, we got a grant. It's for $300,000. The less news is that we applied for 1.5 million. So, so we, we're working on, on sending that money and, and narrowing the project a bit. So we, we haven't yet officially heard from them, other than we were granted this, so that'll be coming next month. We should have no more by then. That's all I have.
Thank you, Marilyn. Anything from Facilities, Mr. Cottington?
Nothing new to report, unless Shaun, you have any numbers on the plastic, on the dividers?
Uh, we, I think you and I had discussed, it was, we were right at like, it depends how many we want to do, but I mean, the number's going to be somewhere, if we did more, we were talking about it, somewhere around $2,000. If, if we have, you know, have someone sitting in every other seat and the rest in the audience, assuming some of the councilors aren't live and they're streaming, they're, you know, videoing or calling in.
So we could arrange the Borough Hall in such a manner that we could have a quorum residing in Borough Hall with the balance of council calling in then?
Yes.
Another question.
Yeah, Mr. Myerson.
Given today's court ruling on the governor's pandemic measures and whatnot, are we looking at the possibility of having them meet in person next month?
Well, this is. Yeah, sorry.
Does anybody understand what that means? Is the ruling today? I think there's still a lot of confusion over that.
Shaun, do you have any insight?
I don't have any guides, other than there's a lot of confusion about the topic.
Shaun McGinnis?
Before next month.
What can you say?
I'm on my phone. I apologize. My internet randomly crashed, so I guess that's a hazard we deal with, with these remote meetings. But my understanding, and I need to do a analysis of that court ruling, but the Pennsylvania Supreme Court had previously ruled on the issue of the validity of Governor Wolf's emergency declaration. And if my understanding of the, the ruling from the Western District today pertains to businesses and other restrictions that had been in place and would not have explicitly rescinded the emergency declaration. So of course, we will analyze that as, as this unfolds, and if, if it does have some impact on our ability to meet remotely, obviously we'll let council know immediately. But my tentative response right now, without having reviewed the full decision, is I think what the Western District decided was different than what the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decided, so I believe we're still within our purview to meet remotely at this time.
Anybody else?
So I, I will plan to bring forth the numbers in our next meeting, that we can discuss how we would break this down then. I'll work with Shaun on that.
Okay, the only wild card I see is if we have members of the public, it's hard to guess or predict in advance how we can handle them in the Borough Hall safely and maintain social distancing, et cetera. But I think that's a bridge we're going to have to cross when we come to it, be my opinion on that. Anything else, Mr. Cottington?
Yes, sir.
Utilities Committee, Mr. Myerson.
Due to COVID, there's nothing new to report.
Okay, on the Finance Committee, I will report that the Finance Committee has met at this time, of course, the police budget is a wild card. Our budget is on the expense side, actually quite well-defined, thanks to Shaun and Darrell. The income side, the big unknown is the earned income tax because of people not working during COVID, and we don't have any numbers on that. At this time, it looks like there's no need for a tax increase, assuming no disastrous income numbers. Jeff, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it accurately describes what we went through. The police budget was obviously a big piece of that. EIT is another one, and I guess somebody somewhere along the way will figure out EIT with people working from home, with offices in Philly, and things like that, where that money actually goes in the future. So, but that won't happen this year, that's for sure.
No, it's, interesting times we live in. I believe Gia is not on the call, is that correct?
No, I'm here.
There must be. Oh, you are, Gia. Hello there, I'm sorry. I'm limited to a very small number of people on my iPad, so I can't see everybody. Welcome, and do you have anything to say to us?
Um, not really.
Okay.
Gia, Gia has been working with me, and it's, she's, it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, because a junior council member usually has a lot to do with Shalfon Evening and the 5K, so we're putting together some duties that she can handle.
Right. Again, we are living in interesting times. I don't know what else to say. But welcome, Gia. My apologies, I can't see you, but I'm glad you spoke up. And with that, we'll move to Steph's. I'm, I'm sorry, anything else, Gia?
No, no, go ahead, fine.
Okay, my apologies. Manager's report, Shaun Kern.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that we advertised for a Public Works laborer and also have a part-time temporary person working in the office. Should, if you call in, she'll be answering the phones on probably two to three days a week, and she's helping us work through some of this back filing that we need to get done.
Super. Pat DeGangi is, I believe, not here?
He is not.
His report is in the packet. Mike McGinnis, Solicitor's Report?
My report is also in the packet.
Thank you, sir. Captain Milligan, anything to report, excuse me, from Central Bucks Regional?
All the information is contained in the packet.
Okay, one thing I would like to pass along, there have been, as far as I know, absolutely nothing but compliments from demonstrators, especially in Doylestown, obviously, and the compliment should be sent to the entire Central Bucks Police Department and all the other surrounding municipalities that have helped us. But fortunately, even when there are protesters on both sides or multiple sides of an issue, they have been very, very well-handed. So my compliments, and I think I can speak for the Borough on this, the Borough's compliments of the Central Bucks Regional, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Shaun, Public Works Report?
It's in the packet.
As, as are the Shalfon EMS and Shalfon Fire Company. I wonder how many people on this campground are being bored by my talking. Request for waiver of land development, 30 North Main Street. I think the first thing to do is to just turn this over to Rich O'Brien, who has in, on pages 30 and 31 of the packet, an explanation of what's going on. But Rich, anything you want to add or say about this?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant and, I'm sorry, the property owner at 30 North Main Street has requested the approval to put a 10-by-20 accessory structure, a shed, on the rear of the property. If you read through my memo, the shed and the property, the hidden, the current zoning, the shed, the residential and purpose area, more doesn't leave any required parking for the two uses on the site. So I believe that it is ripe for a waiver of land development. However, there are some conditions that the council may want to consider, and those are that at present, the parking lot is not striped, and we, you may want to consider having the property owner strip the parking lot, and specifically identify a handicapped accessible parking space to serve the commercial use at the property. In addition, there is a trailer that the property owner owns that is parked on the neighboring property, and we should clarify that trailer with the property owner, and let the council know that now this parking lot fits into the same proposed overall parking study for the parking lots that are tied together in that study. And we may want to speak with the property owner to let him, if he would be willing to entertain a conversation in regard to that overall parking study and tying those parking lots together in back of all the buildings along Main.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. O'Brien? Yeah, Mr. Myerson?
I was, actually wanted to ask Dean, how many cars typically park back there?
Uh, typically, well, what's going on now? There's been a change in the salon. There's just my son-in-law and myself, just two of us working. So I'd say if this was a year and a half ago, it'd be a little different, but at this moment, there's usually, you know, of course, my car's here, you know, I have a truck, and, and then he'll park his car. A lot of times, he parks at the Borough, but as in, as for clients, maybe three to four cars, probably four, we'll say four cars max. We do, due to COVID, we haven't been doing people, clients in between clients, so we're just doing everybody, you know, like if a color and cut comes in, it's a two-hour slot, and then a haircut comes in, that's an hour slot. Before, we used to fit people, you know, clients in between clients. We don't do that anymore.
Has parking ever been an issue?
Uh, it was an issue definitely when we had more staff. As in, you know, because we had, we, you know, we had more staff, but I don't, my intentions, I live upstairs now in the apartment, and my intentions right now, my life, things changed a little bit, and I'm just sort of thinking, keeping things small and, and sort of working my way into the sunset a little bit. I don't mean it that, you know, you know what I mean. I, I, if I grow maybe two more hairstyles, but I, if, you know, but right now, I'm happy with my son-in-law and I.
In Rich O'Brien's letter, Keystone Municipal Letter, it shows that there are required spaces for all uses, and this did assume three-stylus working at the time. But hearing what you're saying, I think what you're doing now, what your plans are, well, I would suggest, just as one of seven council, that we stick with the minimum of eight spaces, and you saw, Rich, I believe, there was the opportunity for 10, even with the new building, correct?
Correct.
So Dean, can you live with eight spaces, or 10 spaces, or nine?
And what, and what do you mean by that? Like making lines for that, or making, do you mean as in a maximum capacity for the lot, or?
Well, I don't mean to interrupt, Dean, but right now, I believe you have the capability for 10 parking spaces at the subject property, and that is not including the stowed area that you're looking to put the new shed on.
Correct.
Okay, all the uses that you have there, inclusive of the salon and the dwelling unit upstairs, with the salon having three-stylus, you would require eight parking spaces. So you have the ability to have two extra parking spaces, but one of those spaces may be used up for the access aisle associated with the accessible parking space.
Oh, I, I see when, and this is when we do the shared parking?
Well, again, what the council may consider is having the parking lot striped now, showing those 10 spaces, and one of those spaces being the handicap spot now.
Okay.
That's actually, that's a zoning requirement. Is it not, Rich, to meet our zoning laws?
If it was to be established now, yes. That salon, again, is an existing non-conformity under the current regulations.
Okay, but.
Not to, not to chirp in, but I, I actually planned on making the lot, well, first of all, I've had it paved, you know, from Schmidt paving years ago, and it, and I've been considering repaving it, but I wanted to wait till, you know, so at that time, I was probably going to put lines in and a couple more papers. But yeah, if I have to, if I have to stripe this lot as it is, that's fine. It's not, not a big issue.
Dean, I'm familiar with the proposed joint parking plan that was developed for the Borough in back of all the buildings on Main Street.
Right. And did, did you ask, what did I think about it?
Well, are you familiar with it?
Oh, yes, I went to, I went to, I know I went to one of the meetings. I, maybe, maybe just one, but I know that I spoke, you know, when I was over at the Borough Hall, Barb and I spoke about it, but I did also go to a meeting.
Okay. Are you in favor of the five parking and having a shared parking easement back there with all the neighbors?
Well, absolutely, when we, when we were that busy, or I was saying that yes, that's a definite. And, and I am, I think, you know, unselfishly, unselfishly, for, like, now I live here. You know, now, you know, I'm back here, it's quiet tonight, it's, you know. But, you know, unselfishly, I think for the business in Shalfon, to be able to have these structures, be able to put a restaurant in, or a boutique, I think a lot of things don't pass through, or they get shot down for the fact that there's not enough parking, and, or, or it's not convenient. I know that now we have the ice cream, you know, Oh Wow! up the road, that now has ample parking, but, but I guess, unselfishly, I would consider it. I, I would think for the Borough that it could be a good thing.
Okay, and, and understand that under this, this waiver of land development, because, again, what, what has been developed for the Borough in regard to that shared parking is a, a plan, and it is not by any stretch of the imagination a final design.
Right, right.
And understand that if the Borough were to consider this ripe for the waiver of land development request, and later on, that plan, that finalized plan for the parking may require you to relocate the shed on your property, that would be okay with you, correct?
Well, I guess life changes. I, I, right now, I would like the shed there.
Well, when I'm saying it wouldn't still be on your property, it just might be in a different location, depending on how the parking works and the parking lays out because of the elevation changes back there in the final design.
Right. I guess, I guess when that time comes, we'd have to, if it's a relocation of the shed, you know, then, of course, the shed is still there and, and, you know, just in a different spot. So it would be interesting to see how they lay, I know I have the plans, I actually have them in the salon, you know, one of these buildings. It would be interesting how it all lays out, but I, for now, in other words, for now, I like having the shed there, and if, if something is, is feasible and, and work, I'm willing to work with people.
I'm gonna, go ahead, Rich, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to finish up and say thank you to Dean for understanding that if indeed the final design of that parking requires that the shed be relocated on his property, he would be open to relocating that shed.
Right, and I think that's all we can ask, because without a plan, it's, it's really impossible to get, to ask for a commitment on an unknown. Again, my, my opinion is one of seven.
Right.
I, I mean, what I've heard, and I, let me say what I've heard, and then Dean, let me know if I'm wrong. You are open to striping the parking, are you, you are agreeable to striping the parking lot as a condition of waiver of land development. You, you should include a handicap space, and Rich, in his letter, brought up an issue of a trailer on adjacent property. Is that being used? I'm not sure from Rich's letter.
Yeah, do you, are you wanting me to answer that?
Please. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, and what he's talking about, my neigh, the neighbor next door to me that used to be the Mapes property, the Orthodontist, I've been cutting his lawn so that he allows me to put my travel camper in his back lots. He has a few tenants there with ample parking, so again, I do his lawn and his grounds, and then I'm able to put my tra, my camping camper for, you know, it's a 28-foot camper. I think where the issue came with the camper that got the township a little riled up was when, when we were in COVID and the salon was shut down, you know, it had to be shut down. I actually had a tenant that left the top part of the building here after 18 years, and so after she left, again, my life adjusted a little bit, and now, I, so I came up and I rehabbed the upstairs here. I went, so I actually stayed in the camper while I was working on the upstairs apartment, and that's where, that's where Randy had an issue with me being in the camper at nighttime, so he actually sort of ordered me out of it, and then, and then, so I, I wound up, you know, I had to go upstairs in my attic and sleep up there.
Oh my goodness.
So, you know, and I explained to him, the only reason I'm here is to rehab this, and then when I'm done, I'm coming upstairs, which was a nice thing, because I lived in my camper for nine months. So coming back to brick and mortar was pretty good. But yeah, so that's why the camper was. But uh, yeah, so that's why the camper was parked in the position it was in, but now it's pretty much tucked in the back. And then to finish that, I'm actually in two weeks, I'll be driving it down to Florida, and uh it'll be down there all winter. Um, but when it is here, I I was putting it in the back corner, so it was pretty, pretty tucked in. I I guess I hope I correctly.
Mr. O'Brien, you see a problem with an unoccupied camper park. Is it a legal parking issue on the neighboring property?
No, and and again, I think our uh point of clarification was that uh somebody was living in it for a period of time.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so.
I I think the issue, I think the issue was that I think, and which is fine, you know, I think Randy thought I was using the bathroom and all that stuff. And I was like, Randy, I'm going inside the building here, like, you know, I'm just showering and so that was, that was the big issue.
From what I'm hearing, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a non-issue at this point, correct?
Uh, that is correct. As long as there's nobody residing in the camper, uh, that's fine.
Okay, so I guess to make life easy, I'm going to make a motion to grant the wa- waiver of land development for Thirty North Main Street for a shed to go on a already impervious surface, conditional upon striping the parking lot for eight spaces, including one handicap space. And uh as it gets dark, it gets harder. Uh, and we have heard, but not, I would not make this motion conditional on any commitment to the shared parking, because I I just don't think that's fair at this time without a plan in place. So that would be my motion. Is there a second?
Second. Mitch, a second.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or further discussion on this issue? Okay, I I see none. In that case, Mike Guinness, can this be a voice vote?
Yes.
In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Then we have waiver of land development.
Hey, Rich, does that mean that when my wife picks me out, I can't live in my trailer in the bathroom?
Well, you can use my trail.
All right, now let's not do this.
Hey, don't knock, knock the trailer. It actually was uh, it was, it was pretty enlightening staying in there for nine months. It actually isn't bad.
Yeah, it probably isn't bad. It's supposed to have use of the bathroom, what, you know, it's not bad.
Yeah.
Okay, no, no living in trailers.
Yes.
Other than borough approved places.
Yep.
Including the mayor. Thank you all.
She's gonna be disappointed too.
Yeah. I could have used the rent money. Yeah.
Okay. Moving right on to action item number two before we dig this hole any deeper. Um, would anyone care to? I don't believe Randy Cohen's on the call or on the meeting. Randy, you are there. I apologize. Again, I can only see a maximum of six people on this.
Log off.
If we're off.
No, we're not log off. Just say thank you and we can log off to the same room.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll log off.
Would anybody, does anybody have any questions for Randall Cohen as or as becoming Chalfont's representative to the Chalfont Regional EMS Board of Directors?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So I um I actually don't know, Mr. Cohen, so uh uh Randy, if you can just give us a little bit of your background and how long you've been in the area, that'd be great.
Sure, no problem. Um, my wife and I have been residents of Chalfont since nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, we have lived on uh Linwood Drive, raised two children. Um, I'm now retired and have the luxury of doing things that I have always wanted to do, but could not make a priority. And getting involved in helping uh locally would be a great opportunity. Um, I I hope I can uh do well by the borough um in the position. I'm a retired engineer and purchasing agent. Um, right now, you can usually see me uh either bicycling on the two oh two bike path or at Peace Valley in my kayak.
Well, I'm in both of those places, so I'll make sure to look for you next time, all right?
All right.
Thanks for your attendance, sir. Really nice to meet you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Meyerson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, yeah, a couple things. Uh, refresh my memory. Uh, earlier this year, did you not come to council and suggest that Chalfont Borough stopped recycling garbage?
No, um, what I said was that the national recycling situation was such that uh it may turn to that, and we should investigate the possibility, but I never proposed stopping. Um, there were a lot of reports at the time that recycling, uh, the waste stream was actually just going into the the trash um eventually, because the cost to recycle was too high, uh, and the cost to split the streams was too high. So I proposed that we look into it with waste management to see if the uh laws had changed and if there would be any advantage to it. Since then, that situation has changed. Um, the waste stream is actually now starting to be uh moved offshore again, and the uh financial aspects of the situation have changed greatly.
Marilyn.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to uh first, we haven't nominated Randy, so I would like to nominate Randy. Uh, I've lost my motion here to the to the EMS Board of Direction Directors. Um, I'd like to say that uh Randy volunteered to help the five K prior to us canceling it, and also Randy's been attending the Doylestown bike and hike thing, so, uh. I think he'd be great to uh become more involved in Chalfont Borough.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Hello? I will second that motion. I will second. Mark Williams seconded that motion. Um, I thought it appropriate to hear a bit from Andy before we actually, or Randy, excuse me, before we move forward, but uh we now have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions, comments, discussion? Randy, I was the charter representative on the Board of Directors, and uh, they're gonna love you as an engineer, probably remembering me, um, so you have, you're following an animal act. Um, but beyond that, uh, I I want to thank you, and uh I think your your experience both as an engineer and the logic that involves and as purchasing will bring value to the re- the Chalfont Regional EMS Board of Directors, so thank you for that. Anything else from council?
Thanks for stepping up, Randy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, in that case, a vote on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 You opposed?
Oppose.
Thank you, Rich. Excuse me?
Oppose.
Was that Mitch?
Correct.
Meyerson opposed. Okay, very good. And with, that motion does carry with one opposition. Uh, the next three motions are gonna be relative to the Central Bucks Regional Police Headquarters. And um, we can, they will be all discussed individually. Uh, Marilyn, who's our repri- who should, you want to do this, or should Mr. Wallace introduce these?
Well, I think Sean should probably introduce them. He's the one that received them. Um, and your packet, so we have three different items. They're all items that have gone out to bid and with the regular bid process that we all must follow. And depending, if you'll recall, um, Chalfont, some of this is for the Doylestown part. It depends on what the item is as to what percentage we're responsible for. Due to the building being shared by Doylestown Borough and the Central Bucks Regional Police Commission. So if it's, if it's an item that's for both the police and the borough building, then uh we we pay approximately fourteen percent of the amount. If it's just for the police department, we pay a third. So that's why uh Sean has put in the amount that we're really responsible for, even though the amount for the bid is higher than that. So Sean, do you wanna go through these?
Well, I I tried to, you know, just put that, you know, estimated portion, which is Chalfont's, you know, portion we're responsible for to try to clean it up, but I mean, these items are items that kind of go along with the building. Um, they weren't ready or they weren't completed. We didn't have exact figures when we approved the construction bid. Um, but with that said, these, these numbers, you know, this, we have to approve the the continue the building process, so. I mean, the low voltage cabling is all the computer and fiber optic cables and everything else that you have to have to run a police station, so. Um, that's what this one's for, and I mean, our portion of this is in, you can see if you read through the co- I mean, the complete contracts are there and um they break it down pretty well. They, if you just look at, it's usually the fir- within the first two or the last two pages of all these contracts, it breaks it out. Um, what's really being given to, you know, the Doylestown Borough Hall side or the Chalfont uh Regional Department. And then our, anything with the police department is split into a third, including all realities. If anyone has any specific questions.
So none, Sean, none of these expenses have been included in anything we voted on so far?
Correct.
So this is in addition to, so the original bid came in under what we had anticipated, so how much leadway was there in terms of the loan we took out? How much room do we have in that loan? To cover these expenses?
Yeah, Jeff, I I I wanna weigh on this a little bit. I think that that our budget, um, which we came in under, uh, included general costs for these items, although we didn't have the solid numbers. Um, we did have estimated numbers for, these are basically security issues. Um, that was my understanding, that in our budgeted amount, these were included in that budget, and we come under that budget.
That is correct. I, that is correct, and the, after we approved these three this evening, the only outstanding one will be for furnishings, which they expect the total to be around four hundred thousand dollars. We would pay for a third of that. So that's, that's the only other item.
So four hundred thousand does not, the four hundred thousand does not include the township building or the borough building?
But our portion for furnishings is that four hundred thousand, but they're still working through. They're work- working through um what can be moved and what cannot. Some items are included in the construction because they're built in. So we don't have that number yet, but that's, these are all in, I, um, Brian is correct in that these, these were part of the, of what we expected to spend. Just, if you'll remember, we did the asbestos removal early. So this is all, none of this is a surprise.
These are all items that have to be done, and I mean, I I wasn't involved at the beginning, but I assumed all these topics were brought up in the very beginning of the project.
They were.
Because we're all in the contract, they can't all be approved at one time.
I am back in some of that discussion, but these are items that were part of the bid that we were aware of. Is that not correct?
That's correct. Well, well, we didn't have any solid numbers, but those numbers were generally um included in the original budgeting. Uh, but they were set aside. It wasn't part of the main construction of the building. It was, it was separate. It was under the the uh the moniker of security, basically.
But they're not unexpected expenses. They were, they were known to be required.
Correct, yes.
Hey, John?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other outstanding expenses that haven't been accounted for at this point, or does this co- sort of cover what we should expect?
Just furniture, furnishings.
Furniture?
Uh huh.
Okay. This all falls under the budget, the original budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And what you're gonna see, one of the things that we're going to uh approve tonight is for Sean to have some leeway for change orders. But those are the only surprises where the change order is if it comes up along the way um that needs to be paid for that we didn't anticipate or costly. If change orders are related to that.
There isn't a lawman for the change orders that, you know, is built in. There is a cushion in there, but they start.
Mr. Meyerson, go ahead.
Uh, so you brought this up, changes and whatnot. Um, has anyone looked into changes, every god, COVID, in terms of Plexiglas, opticians and locker rooms and whatnot? Uh, anything that needs to be looked at, any issues that you foresee?
I don't know the answer to that question, actually. Um, I know some of that was was discussed, but I don't know it was specific to um installation, to be quite honest with you.
Okay, because I dropped off of this with loss of internet, are we still on action item number three or have we moved on? I really do not know.
We're still on three, Mr. President.
Okay, um, thank you. I apologized. The, before we get to change orders, I I think we need to focus the discussion on action item number three, the low voltage cabling contract. Uh, is, does anybody have any specific questions on that? As far as I know, there is not a motion yet on the floor. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, for the sake of discussion, I will make a motion to approve the contract per, as in the packet for Thompson Networks' total cost of the proposal is sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Is there a second for that motion?
I seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Now, questions, comments, discussion specific to the Thompson Networks contract. Anybody have anything to ask, add, comment?
I have a question. Um, so I see all the rough wiring is in there. Is what's going to connect to the rough wiring? So are there phone systems, communication systems involved?
Yes, I believe so. That, I have to pull the contract here, but yes, it's all tied into this.
Okay.
I mean, the the phones themselves would be separate, but this is the wiring contractor that's actually gonna feed all the wiring through to the different rooms, so there's, you know, connection and phone connections, you know, that you can plug into in the wall.
Yep, I understand. Okay, but that, again, that'll be priced out separately, transferring something from an existing structure? Or will that, is that still expected to fall within the running of the original budget?
No, nothing's being transferred ex- from the old building as far as I'm aware in the police station, except for possible furniture, and I'm being told there's not gonna be much furniture that can be reutilized. Everything they're currently using is hand-me-down um equipment.
Okay, thank you.
You're muted, John. Thank you. The wind up here, I was trying to keep the noise to a minimum. Thank you very much. Um, let's do a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Cottington, how do you vote?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Liddon?
Yes.
Marilyn Jacobson?
Yes.
Michael Kelly?
Yes.
Mitch Myerson?
Yes.
Okay. That contract is approved in action item number three. Now we move on to the security contract for the Central Bucks Regional Police Headquarters with Access Security Corporation. I guess to keep this clean, um, would anybody care to make a motion to approve the contract for Access Security, which will be filed by discussion before a vote? The total cost of the proposal would be 214,291 dollars and Chauvin's estimated portion of this is just over $52,000.
So moved, Mitch?
I'll second. Marilyn?
Thank you. I have one question. Uh, in all the paperwork, I could not find where access is located and I was just curious about that. Does anybody know where they are located?
I don't want to speculate, but I believe they're local.
Okay. I, I know I've seen a lot of their trucks around. I just couldn't, didn't have an opportunity to look that up. Any questions, comment, or discussion before I vote?
I hear none. Therefore, a vote is in order. Again, a roll call vote for an expenditure. Mr. Cottington?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Liddon?
Yes.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Myerson?
Yes.
Hey, Tracy?
Can you hear me?
Uh, Tracy, I'm sorry. I did not realize you were there. Um, Tracy, I hope you've heard what we said. How do you vote? My apologies.
Problem, yes.
Uh, being in the middle of nowhere makes my life interesting as well. I apologize, Tracy. I'm limited to very few people on the iPad.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, access is located in Warminster, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. That was a curiosity and I appreciate that answer, Rich. Okay, that motion carries unanimously. In that case, we will move on to action item number five. Uh, the audio visual contract for Central Bucks Regional Police Headquarters Applied Video Technology, AVT. Um, the motion would be to approve the contract to AVT with the total cost of 370,564 dollars, with Chauvin's estimated portion to be 32,202 dollars. Would anybody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments, or discussion on that motion?
Mr. President, um, is my understanding that we're responsible for 14% of the costs?
Um.
Is that, is it a lower amount of this, for this?
It doesn't necessarily work as easily with these contracts as with the construction because the police and or the borough, the borough hall, um, may have much more or less, you know, cabling. If you think about it, that it's not exactly a simple percentage with these.
Got it. Thanks, Sean. Yeah, I, because this, this is well below that threshold.
Yeah, it's about 11%.
Yeah.
I think. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? In that case, a vote is in order and this time I will start with Tracy Bowen.
Yes.
Jeff Cottington?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mark Liddon?
Yes.
Marilyn Jacobson?
Yes.
Michael Kelly?
Yes.
Mitch Myerson?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And, um, that moves us to action item number six. Would anyone care to make a motion to appoint Sean Curran as the new borough manager?
So moved.
Second.
Is there? And Tracy Bowen, second. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I think Sean's done a great job as interim manager and, uh, he certainly proved it. But Sean, let me ask you this. Is it true that you're the only one that applied for the job?
No, no comment. Mike McGuinness, is this a voice vote or a roll call vote?
Uh, I think you can do this one either way, Mr. President.
Well, let's make sure we don't make a mistake and we'll do it in a roll call vote. Is there no other question, comments, or discussion? I will start with Tracy Bowen. Tracy, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Jeff Cottington?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mark Liddon?
Yes.
Marilyn Jacobson?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
And Mitch Myerson?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, very much. Um, would anybody care to make a motion to approve the manager's contract with Sean Curran as included in the packet?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none. Uh, it is a, we'll, we'll do a roll call just to be safe. Tracy Bowen?
Yes.
Yes. Jeff Cottington?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mark Liddon?
Yes.
Marilyn Jacobson?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
And Mitch Myerson?
Yes.
Thank you all. Next we have a resolution, 2020-09, a resolution on the Chauvin Borough Council waiving the residency requirement for the Chauvin Borough Manager Sean Curran. Uh, this is something we have done in the past. Uh, I think, would anybody care to make a motion for a resolution, 2020-09?
So moved.
Second.
And I believe a resolution has to be a roll call, but we'll be safe. Tracy, any questions, comments, or discussion? I see and hear none. In that case, Tracy Bowen? Tracy?
Yes.
I hear a yes. Jeff Cottington?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mark Liddon?
Yes.
Marilyn Jacobson?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
And Mitch Myerson?
Yes.
I have an announcement. It's gotten cold enough. My pen will no longer write. Um, this is not good. Our last action item, uh, now is for change, consideration of, uh, change orders for the regional police building. Resolution 2010, 2020-10, a resolution of the Chauvin Borough Council authorizing change orders by the borough manager for the construction of the Central Bucks Regional Police Department Headquarters. The motion would be to approve resolution 2020-10, authorizing Sean Curran, borough manager, to approve change orders for the Central Bucks Regional Police Department. And I believe we put a not to exceed $25,000 per change order. Is that not correct, Sean?
Yes, it gives the ability to give up to a Chauvin, a change order that costs Chauvin Borough up to $25,000. It would not have to go, would not have to wait for a public meeting for approval. The hope is that we wouldn't delay the project anyway.
Any questions, comments, discussion from council?
Sean, the line right after that still says, um, I'm sorry, the two after that still says there, there will be reports on all change orders, whether you're, you know, whether they're above 25,000 or below?
Absolutely. Everyone will be notified if any change order happens and just because I have the ability doesn't mean, uh, people that are, people that won't be brought in as part of the conversation even for a small change order.
The way this is drafted, anything above $25,000 will come back in front of council, um, for their consideration. Anything below $25,000, someone would have the authority to authorize, but then would bring the change order to council, um, just as a, as an item to keep council aware of any other orders.
This is pretty typical for public bid projects.
Yes. Uh, the, the building committee, um, wanted to set a guideline so that we, now that we're into this, the building was built in 1934 that were refurbished. So there's always something that can come up, but we wanted to make sure that, that we had a limit before it had to go back to three councils and slow down the project. So this is, um, the general contractor recommended the $25,000 level. He, he's not expecting any change orders to be more than that and hopefully very few.
Anything else from council? I see and hear nothing. Therefore, what, we need to have a motion or did we have a motion?
We already had a motion, I think.
Who made the motion? Cause my pen stopped writing.
Oh, maybe not.
I, I don't believe we did.
I don't think we'd have a motion.
I don't believe so either. Um, I was chasing, the wind came up. I was chasing a few papers and lost track of things. Um, would anybody care to make a motion to approve resolution 2020-10 as it appears in our packet?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Jeff Cottington.
Jeff Cottington, second. Any further discussion? I see none. Therefore, a vote is in order. Tracy Bowen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Jeff Cottington?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mark Liddon?
Yes.
Mark? Marilyn Jacobson?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
Mitch Myerson?
Yes.
Thank you. That vote carries. Which brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business to bring up? I'm not aware of any. I see none. Is there any new business? Yes, Mr. Myerson?
Yeah, I don't know. Sorry, I, I was hesitant to bring this up, but it's just going over in my mind and I know this is a long shot, but I think this is important right now. Um, I, I make a motion that Chauvin Borough notify residents via internet that COVID is real and people need to mask up and take safety measures that fall under the CDC guidelines. That's my motion and it's out of concern that I'm seeing people listen to the news, listen to the president and not taking this serious. That's all I got to say. If anyone wants a second, I'd appreciate it. I think the residents would appreciate it.
How do you intend to communicate this via internet? What does that mean?
We put a post on our Facebook page and our webpage that reinstates the severity of what the CDC is saying and their guidelines. And it says that this is, I, I, someone with better English than me saying that it's, it's a real thing. I, I know that, you know, we, we're getting all sorts of crazy stuff right now. I know, Mr. President, you put on Facebook, we'll call it, you know, a blurb about the post office and we're fighting the realities of that. We're also fighting realities of getting conflicting federal information about COVID and whether in fact it's real or not in light of what we just went through this past week.
Is there a second to Mr. Myerson's motion?
I have a question. It's Tracy. Do we have anything like, any link, any federal, um, information on our website? I don't recall seeing any.
No, I'm, I'm looking at that now, actually. There's, there's nothing on it, I believe, about any of these things. Maybe that's a, um, let's say a compromise, but maybe that's an idea to, to Mrs. Mitch's motion to just have somebody through, I'd say Bucks County, but maybe not Bucks County. Maybe it's the, the state's website or, um, or, uh, CDC or some sort of information that provides people a link onto, uh, to other sites.
Right.
We have shared the link. We have shared the links to Bucks County, um, and they give the state's federal guidelines in there. From a borough perspective, we don't want to give advice, um, but we've been sharing theirs and we, all we're doing is sharing the link to their site, um, which, which gives you all the current guidelines and everything for PA.
There's, there's nothing on the website now or on.
It's been on Facebook and, uh, it's been on Facebook and Twitter. Um, we, we could easily post that to the website.
It's not a bad idea. They got us, the website should be a, a source of information, uh, emergency contacts and stuff like that. So having something to some state guidelines makes some sense.
I'm not looking for us to invent anything. I'm looking to us to restate what the CDC is saying.
Right. No, I, I'm in agreement. I, I wasn't aware that there wasn't anything on there, but I do think it's a good idea to, to be a pass through information to the CDC guidelines. And yeah, I, yes, I, I would agree with that. So I would second that motion.
Okay. With that motion second, made and seconded relative to discussion, um, I would like to say that my opinion, uh, as an individual counselor and nothing more, is that I would want to see us perhaps obviously show links to the sites, but I do not particularly believe that we should be putting up something now because there's so many changes that come through. I'm not sure we can keep up with it. So I think the wise thing to do would be to show links to the sites and stay out of the political debate relative to what people are doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with that.
If we find that we're just putting up, but, and are you referring to the CDC or some other government agency?
Well, I would think the CDC, uh, but, uh, that's not, you know, that, that's my opinion. I think that the CDC is the one that, I mean, Centers for Disease Control, we're talking about disease, we're talking about controlling disease. And that is where I personally believe the best and least opinionated, uh, information is being generated.
And, you know, but right now, we, we seem to all be in agreement. None of you guys wanted to meet in person because you all got health issues, but like I said, the fear now is we're on the verge of, we had a court order change this today and where people are getting too many conflicting things, but we need to stick with something that keeps our residents, ourselves, safe. Because Pennsylvania and especially this area has been doing a great job at controlling COVID. And the lesson we need to do is drop our guard and all of a sudden we're back where we started.
I, I'm wondering, Mr. Myerson, if you might be willing to do a friendly amendment to your motion to show links to the federal CDC website, the state, um, health website, Department of Health website, and even the, the county Department of Health website? If there is information that is to, uh, relative to COVID-19 on those sites?
So amended.
And who seconded that motion? There was a second.
Mark Liddon.
Mark, would you, would you agree with the, uh, would you agree to keep your second to the motion as amended?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other discussion, question, comment relative to this motion? Um, I would like to. Go ahead. Go ahead. While I don't see any resident really coming to our website for information on COVID, as a matter of public service, I believe it should be up there.
as a matter of public service, I believe it should be up there. Um, that's just my comment with regard to posting it on our website.
I agree. And the motion is stated, I, I am happy with because we are not generating information. We are simply referring people to, uh, definitive authoritative places or whatever, sources of information perhaps I should say. So I'm very comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I agree, John. I think it should be accessible at every level of government.
I do as well.
And pass, and find that information.
The only place that I would, what we're not doing is generating our own statements, but I don't believe we are in a position to do so with authority and reasonableness. Okay, so we have the motion made to include links on our website, possibly Facebook and Twitter, to the federal CDC, the State Department of Health or appropriate website, and the County of Bucks appropriate website. Anything else from council? In that case, we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry? Yes?
Mr. President, I, I'm sorry, you can't see me. I'd like to make one additional request to this. Um, CDC has very good guidelines for, um, low, medium, and high-risk situations and when a mask should be worn and when a mask should not be worn. Uh, I went through contract, contact tracing seminars. It has to do with, um, the environment, how long you spend with people, distances and such. That information is to when you should wear a mask and when you do not need to wear a mask. It would be very helpful to the, uh, typical resident because that's something that comes up as a question very often. And CDC has really good guidelines for that.
Uh, I see nothing in this motion that will prevent that. And I would, assuming this motion passes, I would then direct Sean to talk with Randy Cohen. Um, Randy, do you prefer Randy or Randall?
Either one works.
Okay, uh, that's fine. I, I believe in being respectful of people's names. Um, assuming this motion passes, I, Sean, I think you could use Randy as a reference for the information he's talking about. And I don't believe it's outside the scope of this motion. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? I see none. In that case, a vote, a voice vote is in order. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, correspondence, anything, Sean?
No.
No correspondence? Do we have any public comment?
No.
Then the announcements, announcements will be, the planning commission is to meet Monday, September 28th at 7:00 PM. The Central Bucks Regional Police Commission, Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. The Harb, Monday, October 5th at 7:00 PM. And the next council meeting will be Monday, October 12th at 7:00 PM. And at this point, my belief is all these meetings are virtual or internet meetings.
Right.
Mr. Anything else to come before council? I see none. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
With no objection, we are adjourned at 8:15 PM.
We forgot to vote.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Have a good night.
Good night. Randy, before you go.
You're welcome.
Randy? Randy Cohen?